I call this meeting of City Council and City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street on the second floor in Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505 on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, 7 o'clock. If the city clerk would please take the roll.
Yes, Bill Quackey.
Here.
Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine.
Here.
Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshberger.
Here.
Brian Butcher. Mayor Buganam.
Present.
Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, one God, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, on our agenda tonight, we have the approval of our July 2nd, 2024 minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. Second, all right. Any amendments? No?
Present.
By proclamation?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have on our agenda the correspondence, so this is the recognition of the Boe Park lifeguard. So if those of you who are in attendance here this evening, Zach Rivas, Alyssa Givney, and Ava Beafor. Okay, I said that.
Boe Park guards in the hallway. Come on in.
As we're getting started, if everybody would be so kind as to make sure to not block the hallway. Because fire code safety and so that all of them can come on in and their families can see them and the wonderful things that they accomplish. Are you all still together?
You can come over here.
Please go over here.
There's the lifeguards.
Oh, okay.
And the other parents, you guys can come over.
You're Zach.
Wherever you feel comfortable.
Who is Alyssa?
Gary.
Gary. And Ava. All right. You were the three, right? That were on the scene? Okay. And for those of you that don't know, you'll know here in a second, as I read through the proclamation, exactly why they're here, just probably use this microphone for those listening at home. All right. This proclamation of exemplary service. Whereas on June 8th, 2024, at the Krebs Park Swimming Pool in Morgantown, West Virginia, a medical emergency occurred during our public hearing session. And whereas recognizing the urgency of the situation, my colleagues Ava Beafor, Zach Rivas, and Alyssa Gary. Began performing CPR and whereas the remaining lifeguard team assisted by contacting 911, guiding patients from the pool arena, and securing the facility. And whereas the actions demonstrated by these young, these young adult lifeguards who provided an exemplary response and execution of training to help save a life. Be it proclaimed that we commend these lifeguards' service, dedication, and lifesaving effort. Their actions exemplify the highest standards of duty and compassion. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Buganam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of City Council, on the 16th day of July, do hereby recognize Zach Rivas, Alyssa Gary, and Ava Beafor, and the Boe Park lifeguard team. And let it be known that we applaud our guards for their lifesaving intervention and their swift response in an emergency capacity. We recognize the critical role of lifeguards in making our municipal aquatic facilities safe, and we encourage avenues for increasing awareness of lifeguard employment opportunities in our community. Let us celebrate our appreciation of their service here today. And then we actually have these individualized ones for you all. So thank you for what you did.
Oh, sorry.
You guys actually have a former coworker of a person who gave his child a heart sale.
Oh, really?
Yes. He was former, he's here in Morgantown. So thank you so much for all that you've done. And thank you all so much for doing that. We have a couple missing a couple more.
Should have nine.
How did we get?
A few come last night.
All right.
We can get more.
We can make more.
Thank you all so much for that. And then we're going to, we'll get you. Do you have to get all the pictures we need? Like we can have like a team photo, maybe say a team, just to make sure everybody gets centered. More likes the dream work.
Short people, I should say.
And then if I could have you stay here so all council could come around now that Council Quackey pointed out, so we can all have the pictures to show our appreciation for all that you all did. I understand you need a picture for this. All right. And then you can use a little bit, perfect name. Another smaller.
Honestly, everyone's being.
Good? All right, before we get started, we have a larger crowd than normal. We do ask that everybody please make sure to be in a chair. We have some available now, so we don't have anyone sitting in the aisle. That's due to fire safety codes. In addition, as just a nice friendly reminder, I'd like to also add that there is no smoking or vaping inside council chambers. And please be respectful of those, for those of you that it is your first time attending, please be respectful of those talking this evening. And on to our next portion, which is our public hearing. And the first one we have up is, let me open this, an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of a parcel of real estate in the 7th Ward of the City of Morgantown. Tax District 15, Tax Map 6, Parcel 18, commonly known as 440 Drummond Street, from a pro, professional office in residential district to a R3 multifamily residential district, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit heretofu attached and declared to be part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. If anybody would like to speak on this manner, matter, you may have an opportunity to come and do so now.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Vader Gigabaca, this is Bob Bennett. He's here with his wife, Freda Bennett. Bob's wife owns 440 Drummond. And I wanted to speak briefly in favor of the staff recommendation. I don't intend to be repetitive from what's in your packet, but I did want to just give you some additional information that you may not have, if I may approach. I want to hand out a set of photographs of the interior of this unit and just ask that they pass around, I handle the council first, and then just, I want to make sense, one copy of the GIS map that's not in your packet of this unit. And as those are going around, I'll just briefly describe what this unit is involved, what's involved with the unit on the interior. There are four units. Of course, Mr. Bennett and Mrs. Bennett are asking that the property be amended from pro to R3 to permit the use of all four units, because under pro, they'd be prohibited because you're limited to two or more, or two or less, rather. So on the interior of this, you have three one-bedroom apartments, one bedrooms, and then one two-bedroom. On the street level is a large one-bedroom, and then up above that would be the other ones, the one-two-bedroom and the other two-one-bedrooms. There are four gas meters for each of these units, and each of them are supported by separate utilities. The building was always intended for four people, or four families, and it is still set up that way. There's a garage and a carport. These are nice units. You can tell from the photographs as they go around, these are nice-looking units. Mr. Bennett and Mrs. Bennett lost the ability to use the building as it was intended when it was built because of a loss of grandfathering that occurred prior to ownership. Mr. Bennett acquired this property through an estate. It was partly inherited, partly purchased. But the loss of the grandfathering, which permitted the four units to be utilized, occurred when a death occurred. So he's not at fault for that. The, his possession began in 2021. Now, I want to talk a minute about zoning maps, just briefly. I was on the Montague County Planning Commission for a long time, served as its president for a very long time. Prior to that, served on the West Run Planning Subcommittee, where our job was to color the maps. We probably spent two or three years as a Subcommittee coloring the maps and taking what was an area that was previously unzoned and making decisions such as, this should be pro, this should be R1, this should be commercial. It's a difficult job, and it's fraught with human error. I would suggest to you that the very reason, obviously, that you have the ability of a person to come forward on either a text amendment or a map amendment is to correct those types of problems. So it's a good system that we have. The, I want to speak briefly about the first reading that occurred on June 4th, just to make a correction on the history of this case. This comes to you not as a text amendment. It did initially as a text amendment in 2023, but it failed at the planning level, and it failed at this level. But that was a text amendment. That would have changed every single pro property in the entire city. So I would argue that was a good decision, because pro, and I think there's probably a consensus among everyone, that, from what I've heard in attending planning meetings and attending this body, that pro is being worked on. So we're here on the map amendment. The Planning Commission approved it 4 to 2, made a recommendation to this body to adopt the request. Staffs made a recommendation. The reason, the other reason the staff, the map, the text amendment didn't go through is because the comprehensive plan hadn't been completed. So the staff had stated in June of 23, although it may have been consistent with the 2013 comprehensive plan, let's hold off till we get 2023 in place, which didn't happen until December of last year. So it was even recommended back then, but it was an old plan, but now we know from staff that it's in keeping with the current plan. I wanted to speak briefly about traffic and what could be built. There was some concerns that I've heard before, and I would like to say that I've studied carefully the difference between pro and the difference between R3, and interestingly enough, if permitted, Mr. Bennett and Mrs. Bennett will have many restrictions by moving to R3 that they wouldn't have if it stayed as it was. And I'm just going to go from memory, I have them in my notes. One example is a, a unit for disabled adults or children of 13 or more, which is the largest type of unit like that. It's permitted currently, but it would only be conditional if you moved it to R3. So he could do something large right now in terms of having the creation of transient traffic, not residential traffic, but patients, customers, employees. So I would assert that perhaps he'll even have less traffic if he is allowed to go to R3 than what could possibly be built. The other concern that I heard that was raised had to do with the, what will happen if Mr. and Mrs. Bennett don't own it? And I heard that so many times at the Mont County Planning Commission. Well, what if this, what if we allow them to do that? They turn around and sell it the next day. Then a developer comes in and builds Taj Mahal. Well, Mr. DeMaster said it best at the planning meeting in May, when it was approved 4 to, when he said, that's just not reasonable to believe that, because we have setbacks. In fact, I ran the word setback through the zoning ordinance today. It came up something like 247 times. So there are a lot of other rules that'll affect Mr. Bennett or some future purchaser. And I want to address the idea of purchase for a minute, because I heard the comment that the property was up for auction. I want to clarify what that was. It's not up for auction because the bank was foreclosing. Mr. Bennett was trying to sell. Mr. Bennett was trying to sell the property because he can't use it for what's intended for. He wants to use it to have four different people in there, four unrelated family members, as you would be able to under R3, but he's prohibited to. He has since taken it down from the auction site. But he was the one that was going to sell it. It was not some type of a foreclosure. I don't know, even though that was implied in the statement regarding the auction, but I wanted to clear that up today. So, I've addressed the, the traffic, what could be built. The apartments are empty now. We would ask again that you adopt the staff recommendation and the recommendation of the Planning Commission, so that there could be apartments there. And I think I got the consensus when I was here at the meeting of the first reading, that there was a consensus that we all wanted apartments there. And I think it would be a good use. Thank you. If anybody has any questions, we'll take them.
Would anybody else like to wish to speak on this particular ordinance?
My name is James Jolieni, I live at 256 Prairie Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. Yeah, I'd like to, just a little history and then also, first, I want to say I support his wanting to get a zoning change to R3. In 1994, we made a lot of decisions that a lot of things have come back to this council and previous councils and will moving forward. We made a decision to zone just about every piece of property in the city, R1 or R1A, things that it should have never changed from what they were. Now, in this case, I understand it's, it's a, a Pro situation, but these properties were grandfathered in. Well, what I would say to this city, I wish we, we as a city were more consistent when we looked at grandfathering, because I've brought things to this city before. There's a church sitting up in a single-family neighborhood that sat vacant for two years. Well, therefore, after a 12-year period, it's not grandfathered in anymore. But when I came to this council, when I came to this planners at the point, that point in time, and said to them, "Wait a minute. All churches aren't equal. The church that was there had 30 members. The church that's there now is wanting to grow and be a much larger church." They had obstacles such as off-site parking, all the things that were completely ignored by this council and by this Planning Commission. So, what I suggest is, how do we pick and choose? Do we go by the people that play fairly? Do they pay people that are naive in the sense that they want to do the right thing? Like another situation that I have next to me, where there's a school being proposed about the zoning with that, that's been going on since October. But what I want to say to you is, we need to be more consistent, okay? And to deny that person the right of their property, when you're hearing it has four apartments on it, it's R3. If he had to pursue this to court, which I hope he doesn't have to, I think that it would be a no-brainer. But the fact of the matter is, is that I think we need to look at all things equally, all right? And look at the whole picture. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak specifically to this ordinance? All right, I close that now. All right, uh, on to the next one, Part B, an ordinance providing for the zoning of a certain portion of real estate to be annexed into the 6th Ward of the city of Morgantown upon final order from the Mon County Commission as B2, Service Business District by amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit attached and declared to be part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this public portion? You may come up and do so now. All right, and I will close that public portion. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zoning code to establish a use classification for smoke shop or tobacco store, establish definitions related to the use and provided for permitted uses and supplemental conditions related to the use and related defined terms. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may come and do so now. All right, and I will close that one. Next, we have an ordinance authorizing a commercial lease and operating agreement with Trademark Aviation at the Morgantown Airport. Anybody wishing to come and speak specifically to this ordinance may wish, may come and do so now. And we're closing our public portion. Next, we have in our public portion, an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and annoling a 12-foot wide unnamed alley running a distance of approximately 160 feet located between Calan Avenue and Madigan Avenue in the 1st Ward of the city of Morgantown, Mon County, West Virginia, not used for useful or sidewalk, stormwater management utility, or any other purposes. Anybody wishing to speak on this ordinance may do so now. All right, and I will close that. And then, lastly, we have an ordinance of the city of Morgantown, authorizing acquisition of Cheatview Public Service District by the Morgantown Utility Board, and amending Article 927 of the city code to establish rates for service area of the former Cheatview Public Service District. Anybody wishing to come and speak on this may do so now.
Good evening. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm here to answer any questions.
That, uh, actually will be in our unfinished business portion, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So, anybody else wishing to speak on this right now? All right, I will close that. All right, on to unfinished business. First, oh, we're actually, I'm sorry, let me close our public hearings on these ordinances. Next, we have unfinished business, and this is a consideration of approval or a second reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of a parcel of real estate in the 7th Ward of the city of Morgantown, Tax District 15, Tax Map 6, Parcel 18, commonly known as 440 Drummond Street, from a Pro, professional office in residential district to a R3 multifamily residential district, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown on the exhibit here too, attached and declared to be part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein.
Move to approve.
Second.
And discussion?
Makes sense.
Yes. Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Joe Bouganum?
Yes. Passes 5-1. Next, we have a consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a commercial lease and operating agreement with Trademark Aviation at the Morgantown Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
And, any questions? Or I guess I'll look to John, Mr. Verbal, of our Morgantown Airport. Would you like to speak on this?
It would be good for the public to understand what we're dealing with.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so this lease agreement is for a new LLC, established itself in Morgantown. A couple key business partners in the, in the area are putting this company together, and they're leasing the facility from us to provide charter services, aerial photography, and aircraft maintenance services. It's a, from what we look at, it's a, it's a good partnership for us, uh, low risk, and, um, we're looking forward to, to continue growth at the airport.
Looking forward to seeing it in operation.
Great. Thank you.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganum?
Yes. Passes 6-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval of an ordinance, second reading of an ordinance in the city of Morgantown, authorizing acquisition of Cheatview Public Service District by the Morgantown Utility Board, and amending Article 927 of the city code to establish rates for service area of the former Cheatview Public Service District.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Oh, Mike, welcome back.
Yes.
Would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, okay, this is for the acquisition of the Cheatview Public Service District by the Morgantown Utility Board, and also, we are, uh, the ordinance will adopt their existing rates. There is no rate increase involved with this acquisition. In fact, there is actually a small decrease, uh, for, for any water that is lost, you know, due to a leak to a customer, uh, but it's, uh, very seamless. We've been taking care of the system for many years, and, uh, formally did so under an agreement this year, uh, after Mr. Stad's passing, and now, uh, we're acquiring ownership.
And I just wanted to clarify, this is separate from the new proposed Cheat Lake wastewater treatment plant. This is similar area, but totally different project.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and it was in the paper recently, so.
Good to make that distinction.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganum?
Yes. Next, we have boards and commissions.
Mayor, I have, I would like to nominate Irene Dunn Savage to the Cultural Arts Commission.
Mayor, I'd like to...
I'll second.
By acclamation.
Yes.
Good.
Very good.
I'd like to nominate Tony Antonini to Cultural Arts.
I'll second that.
By acclamation.
Yes. And Mayor, I'd like to nominate Rachel Cohen to the Fairmont Morgantown Housing Authority.
Second.
By acclamation.
Yep.
Very good.
All right. That closes our unfinished business. Now, we will move on to our public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Thank you, and we have a list of signings here. As a friendly reminder during the public portion, uh, please be respectful of those speaking in terms of not disrupting anyone that has taken their time to come and speak. You have four minutes to do so. The first person we have on our list this evening is Mark Downs. And now I open, I'm sorry, I open our public portion. Bear with me.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark Downs, 212 Kingwood Street. Um, I'm here on behalf of Main Street Morgantown, the president of Main Street Morgantown, to read a letter that the board of directors, uh, has, has asked me to bring, bring forward in, on, in, on behalf of our 50-plus, or about 50 supporters. Dear City Manager Haas, Mayor Aboganum, and city councilors, as you know, Morgantown is a caring and compassionate community, and the mission of Main Street Morgantown is to develop and promote our vibrant business, uh, and prosperous downtown Wharf districts. We're proud of the small business, nonprofits and agencies, and organizations that together support our 30,000 residents who call Morgantown home. But it's clear that some are taking advantage of our goodwill, and the actions are hurting the city we love themselves, and many seeking to escape the cycle of addiction that they're caught in. For years, we've been working in partnership to address safety issues in our city core. However, the effects of the recent escalation in criminal activity and aggressiveness, uh, and its aggressiveness are very troubling. The increase in the drug acti, the drug economy and general lawlessness is evident on any given day within steps of numerous merchants. The, the public library, the city hall, the public safety building, hypodermic needles and trash litter the rail trail, and areas around Ruby Amphitheater. Main Street Morgantown has heard the growing concerns of those who avoid merchants in the downtown and Wharf districts because they feel unsafe, even during the day. On behalf of our board of directors, we implore the city manager, mayor, and city council to take immediate actions to make our city safer and stem the enablement of addict, addiction and criminal activity that ensues. The illegal distribution of narcotics, criminal behavior, destruction of property, and often aggressiveness to stakeholders in downtown and the Wharf District is unacceptable. Arrests by the Morgantown Police Department show the vast majority are not members of our community. We strongly urge that clear boundaries, consistent enforcement, and respect for the rights of everyone be pursued. We would like to discuss what new steps we can take as a community to address this now. Right now, the care and compassion that comes from our community is being compromised, and this must stop. Respectfully, the board of directors of Main Street Morgantown. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Tricia Di...
Dichenzo.
Dichenzo. Did I get that right?
Good evening. My name is Tricia Dichenzo, 214 Wall Street. I'm here tonight to show support of wees for having the courage at the last council meeting to propose a discussion about the encampments and public camping bans that are causing so much distress to our community. She was publicly condemned in a letter by a group of homeless advocates through Mountain State Justice. The intent was to bully and threaten in order to silence her on these issues, but I think it has really angered a lot of people. Even in the mo, even the most sympathetic people can see with their own eyes the decline of Morgantown in the last few years. The only way to bring it back is to stop doubling down and continuing on this current path. We must finally have a discussion that includes all of the affected parties. This council is not elected only to serve the advocates and blind themselves to the rest of the citizens. These advocates have a single-minded goal, which considers only one group and does not consider the effects on us. The evidence shows that crimes are being committed against citizens at an alarming rate, and this is a fact. It's evidence-based, if you will. This group of advocates is trying to divide the community and hold them hostage, as if acknowledging crimes makes you uncompassionate and unwilling to help. This should not be a them-or-us cause. If that group sincerely wants community involvement in any solution, then the community must be protected first. Doesn't that sound logical? No one is trying to make homelessness a crime, but when criminal acts are occurring on a regular basis, then it becomes unacceptable on a societal level, level, and at some point, someone needs to be held accountable other than the victim. If someone broke into your homes, rubbed graffiti on the walls, spread used needles around, and then stole your appliances, I don't think we would expect you to ignore it. But this is an example of what we are being expected to, to do almost constantly. Aside from the physical damage, you are destroying the image of the city to the students and parents of the students who expect a certain level of safety from the town they have entrusted to educate their child. I know homelessness and the drug-addicted homeless and mental health are complex issues. My own sister was homeless by choice for over 15 years and a drug addict before she passed from one of her addictions. I encourage all of you to take a look at what life is really like in an encampment. The squalor and filth is evident by the garbage that is strewn everywhere. Drug use is rampant. Much of the population are active drug users who have chosen to continue using, since there is a readily available supply of drug paraphernalia and many drug dealers in town now. And how is this serving anyone? Do you feel that you really have won something by continuing this life of despair for so many? My opinion is that they need to get grip on the drug problem that has been created here first. Keeping someone high is not elevating the quality of their life. And to let, let's talk about the housing as a solution. It's also an unreasonable ask to expect property owners to house active drug users at their own personal and financial risk. Simply put, many of these organizations do not have the skills to offer the wraparound services that would be necessary. services that would be necessary. Thank you, Wees, for paying attention to the cries of your constituency and trying to keep us safe. Thank you.
I have Charlie B.
Thank you for hearing me today. I have printed out copies of the resources I'm going to reference in what I have to say today. I also am about to send you an email. I meant to do that on my walk-up, but I forgot to do that because there are a lot of links. I'm really just here to respond to some things that I heard in the last meeting. Number one, Chief Powell stood up here and asked for the community's help with the perception issue that the department is facing, which is leading to difficulty in hiring and retention. And so I do have some help to offer, and that is a part of the work that we have to do. We really do need to make sure that we're not infantilizing and dehumanizing women if we want them to work for us. I think we can all agree. Using terms like females and girls to describe women in these chambers in front of our entire town really does set a tone that we can all hear. And hearing those words, female and girl, to refer to a woman, that's a big red flag for a lot of us to know that we're not going to be safe around the person who uses those words, obliviously not realizing that they are dehumanizing and infantilizing a person. So, I have a resource. It's a Forbes article on how and why this needs to change, and how I can help improve the workforce or the working environment for everyone, not just women. Number two, y'all also asked for help on how to solve the homeless mental health drug problem, saying that this seems to affect everyone everywhere in the U.S., and you haven't seen any solutions anywhere else that work. But I have. I've lived in a lot of places, and I've been looking at this issue in a lot of different ways, from a lot of different perspectives, including my own connections with my friends and family members who have both overcome and succumbed to this crisis. One solution that we have seen work is guaranteed income. I know that a lot of people don't like this, but guaranteed income, rent assistance, and housing voucher programs can actually solve housing insecurity, and every single guaranteed income pilot program I could find on the city level has led to significantly improved health outcomes for those involved and to increased employment. Please don't forget that you need an address to fill out a job application. I have some resources on that as well. There is a Mayor's for a G.I. and the National League of Cities that are both working on creating guides for cities to set up these kinds of programs to help their own community members who are experiencing housing insecurity. And quite frankly, they're a lot cheaper than sending them to jail. Right now, West Virginia spends more than fourteen hundred dollars per person per month to lock someone up in prison. I don't know about y'all, but that's way more than I spend on my two-bedroom apartment in South Park. So, why are we spending more than a two-bedroom apartment's rent to send someone to prison, ruin their life, give them a criminal record that makes it harder for them to access housing, when we could more cheaply support our local landlords, local property owners, and voucher systems that connect people with the resources they need to keep them housed, help them get jobs, and actually get back on their feet and be respected members of our community, our neighbors we're talking about? This could happen to any of us. I can say very, very confidently that every single person in this room is closer to sleeping on the street and trying to figure out where you're allowed to sleep on the street and hope that you don't get arrested or assaulted in the night than we are to living the Zuckerberg business life. We just are. It could happen to anyone. Another solution that actually works is increasing mental health resources that meet the community where they are and work to help folks control, take control of their mental health while they are experiencing crises. I have to commend the Morgantown Police Department for already figuring this out and hiring a social worker and implementing an insane amount of work in one year. Wherever Kelly Rice is, you're my hero, and I don't think you deserve to burn out this year. So, please do whatever you can to support the police department in hiring way more social workers so we don't burn out the one we have, and increase the number of programs that get social workers funded in community where we are seeing the signs of these crises. The more folks we can link up with the specific services that serve their specific needs, the more neighbors we can see not just survive, but thrive. I still have more. Is anyone interested?
I'm sorry, we have to stick to our time.
Can I hand these out to you, the rest of this?
Absolutely. And the address.
The difference between being prescribed an opiate and using a legal opiate is whether or not you can afford a doctor. How are these laws not classics?
Hey, Charlie, do you have your address for us for the record, so we can...
I would give you my legal address.
Absolutely.
Crossroads at this Grand Street. I'd like you to have.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have, and before we continue on, let me remind everybody in our audience that while someone is speaking, to please be respectful and to listen. That's what we are here to do. Next, we have, is it Crest Earl? Erp, Crest Erp.
All right. I apologize for the mispronunciation. Better than Erp. I'm here on behalf of many residents from Bluegrass Village and Independence Hill Trailer Parks in Morgantown. They've been taken over by Flagship Communities REIT, formerly Inspire, under SSK Real Estate. Flagship Communities is a Kentucky-based real estate investment trust, REIT, that trades on the Toronto Stock Exchange. The CEO Curtis Keeney is a criminal, and him and his people are harassing and intimidating our entire community in egregious and illegal ways. He's using eviction notices, intimidation tactics, and a few of us have proof, including me and my girlfriend. I'm not a resident, though I am standing up for everyone at both communities. It's actually three total. I'm also talking to people in Kentucky. There's thirty communities there, and there's forty-five in Illinois, by the way. My girlfriend and I have three boys and a thirteen-day-old newborn girl, and they gave her an eviction notice in retaliation for me protesting Kirk Keeney and Flagship Communities. Multiple residents were told by corporate that we legally are not allowed to talk to neighbors about lot prices and leases amongst each other, and that's a clear violation of our freedom of speech and freedom of assembly. Many residents of Bluegrass Village have evidence against these owners. Also, I've been in contact with residents from Derby Hills Point in northern Kentucky, and we have been devising plans of action to fight back legally and to contact more trailer parks in Illinois because they have already started an open class action lawsuit against them, the same company, it's the same company. And it's the same company within them. They got this, they acquired this April seventeenth. Kirk Keeney asked if he could acquire it because SSK was going under. Regardless, they went from a triple F to an A+ for some reason, and then within two weeks, they were a D-. My buddy that I grew up with that is only thirty-five years old and a quadriplegic on social security, they raised his rent, kicked him out, and sold his trailer from under him because he couldn't afford to get it moved. He's homeless now and currently living in a nursing home. Somebody should address that, and I know you all know who the hell that is. The new leases say that the new owners and property manager are allowed to come into our homes at any point they deem fit. Also, that they are not allowed to have guests overnight without permission, or it's an automatic eviction. All these are automatic evictions, by the way. Also, if you have more than one pet of any kind, automatic eviction. If you have more than two people living in your home, they haven't approved, automatic Kids pack curfews now have automatic eviction. There's all, it's a big list. Those people, they kicked an eighty-two-year-old out recently because eighty percent of everybody in there is elderly and on social security. They're scared. They're fucking terrified.
Please.
I'm sorry, but when I say that they're being kicked out, like you're all mad about the homeless and shit, which see, all these people ain't even from here. That Hazel House bullshit, sorry. Calm down. We need to do something about these people. They're not from here. They've acquired, April seventeenth, they acquired twelve, they went on the World Economic Forum and asked if they could come and fix these low-income communities. They acquired twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-three lots all over the U.S., and there's two class action lawsuits against them right now. If you have anything for us people, you gotta stand up for us. They're kicking out all of our old people. They're terrified. This is one person, really quickly, I'm so happy that somebody... Wait, it's not that I'm not willing, I'm not able to because I'm handicapped, and I'm also afraid of them, and I'm afraid that they will make my life a living hell like they have a lot of the other seniors in this place. And I have no way to go, and I have nobody in my life. I have people, I have elderly coming to us in the middle of the night crying. I got paid, this is a problem. They're in Independent Hill, Bluegrass, and I can't remember the other ones. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Sherri St. Clair, is it? Did I read that correctly?
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Thank you for your time. If you haven't met me, I am, my name's Sherri St. Clair, I'm the chief at WVU Police Department. And I'm here tonight to let you know that all, to let you know that our focus is on the students' safety as we head into a new semester. We stand ready to support the city in any efforts however we can. As your neighbor, our pledge is to continue to be your partner in making Morgantown and Juan County a safe place to live, work, visit, and learn, and raise a family. So in any way we can support you guys, we're here for you. That's all I got. Thank you. Your time.
Next, I have Erin Shelton.
I'm going to try to talk fast because I have a lot to say. My name's Erin Shelton, I work with the unhoused population of Morgantown. I am appalled and disappointed by the suggestion of a camping ban by this council at the last meeting. Camping bans are cruel, ineffective, and inhumane, and I'm asking you once again to please consider any of the more productive approaches that me and others have asked you for at these meetings, rather than criminalizing some of the most vulnerable members of our community. No one, especially those of us who work to shelter and care for people in our community, wants to see people to have to live outside, but the answer is housing and not further criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Some of the people who have recently come to me in my work who were previously living outside include a couple that is eight months pregnant, a disabled teenager abandoned by her family, an amputee, a schizophrenic woman, multiple sexual abuse survivors, and a previous foster youth who became homeless when his adopted parents died. Those are the people that you want to criminalize, and what for? All of them, for some reason or another, were not able to access shelter for weeks, months, or longer before coming to us. There are not enough shelter beds for all of the unhoused people in this city, not even with both shelters are open at full capacity. At our last point in time count, there were over a hundred people experiencing homelessness in our county. Even where there are beds, there aren't appropriate places for especially vulnerable populations, or there are barriers and requirements that prevent some people from accessing shelter. If we can't give everyone a safe, accessible place to go, we need to leave them alone when they turn to surviving outside. If you want to work on providing more safe spaces for people, there are a whole bunch of us who are here to help with that, but criminalization is not the answer. A camping ban will lead to jail time for people who have severe mental illness where they won't receive appropriate treatment, fines that they can't pay, and criminal records that they'll be judged for forever, making it even harder for them to get ahead again. When they're released from jail, they're put right back out here on the streets with no resources in an overburdened system that doesn't have the capacity to house everyone on the streets because, like this council, our federal and state governments fail to appropriately address the homelessness crisis we're in. I imagine that unfortunately, we're going to keep seeing budget cuts to low-income housing programs, less affordable housing, and harsher legislation against poor people all over the country. People are going to keep being homeless because we, as a society, are not doing anything about it. Creating harsher conditions for people who are on the streets isn't going to make them go away, and it isn't going to make conditions better for our community. Shifting people in and out of jail is not going to make our community safer. There's been talk that people here are taking advantage of Morgantown's compassion and kindness, but I primarily see unhoused folks in Morgantown experiencing hostility, dehumanization, and abuse. That is why I am here to advocate for one group of people in our community consisting of some of our most vulnerable members. Reasonably, I am less concerned about the property owners who are profiting off of poor renters, including the drug addicts that are here to drag through the mud, accepting almost nine hundred and fifty dollars a month each from HUD for hundreds of essentially unlivable units. Yes, I am concerned about the vulnerable people in our community, not those who are profiting off of them. The least you can do is not make existing a crime for folks who are already suffering and struggling more than any of you could probably ever imagine. So do the right thing, drop the idea of a camping ban, and work on humane solutions that actually work.
Next, we have James Giuliani.
Good evening again. My name is James Giuliani, naturally, and some say it's the other, but I'm Giuliani. I've been for since birth. That's okay, man. That's cool. All this is a tough act to follow, and I've got so much, many racing thoughts, but I do want to thank Wees Michaels for bringing this up. It's something we talked about when I was running for council, and something we knew we needed at that point in time. You see, the emotions that this brings is overwhelming to me. I'm sure most of these people probably don't even understand who I am and the things that I've tried to bring to this city. I remember working with Reverend John Sonnaday fifteen years ago, okay? We talked about this problem, and he said, "What would happen if we didn't do certain things?" Well, guess what? We didn't do those certain things. What we've done, we've talked with each other, we've talked around each other, we've talked at each other, and guess what? All that has come with more dissension, more division within our community. So for folks to stand there, because I am a businessperson, I am a landlord, okay? And I've given free rent to a lot of people, okay? And here's what I'm going to tell you. Take care of your places. You'll have a place to live. To the people that... I'm willing to work with, and I would love to get ahold of a group of people that actually do want to work and solve a problem. I've come to the city manager, I've come to different people on council, and I said, "What do we do? What do we do? What do we do?" I just keep hearing complaints. So, why don't we figure it out? If you folks have some plans, bring the plans forward. The folks that don't want to see people on the streets, because here's what I don't understand. How come I don't see all these people on county property? How come I don't see all these people on WVU's property? How come I don't see them different places? I'm in Orlando, Florida, in Winter Park, Florida. How come I don't see it there? But guess what? We built resources. We built resources. There are people for places for people to stay. So these people are correct in saying they have to have somewhere to stay and somewhere to go. That is ultimate, okay? But the fact of the matter is, how do we get there? But the fact of the matter is, when these people tell you that, "Oh, my God, if you don't house them properly, it's okay for them to be here, not my son, not my daughter, no way they would be laying on the street like this, no way they would be addicted." Some of my friends that I've talked to, no way we would allow this. So who are the people who are these people's families? Who are the people, these people's friends, who allow them to muddle in this, to be addicted like this, and not take up for them, to bring them into their homes? Nobody should be out on these streets, okay? Nobody! But guess what? To allow it to happen, then we're all complicit. We're all complicit.
That is the last on my list. If anybody else is wishing to speak at this time, you do not have to have signed up to do so. You just need to state your name and address, and stick within the four minutes time, please.
Hi, my name is Miles Case, and I live at 136 Sherman Avenue. First of all, thank you all for hearing me. So in light of the recent proposal to expand the public encampment bans, I'd like to add some crucial context that I feel has been left out. One-third of Americans are currently living paycheck to paycheck. Even excluding the fact that West Virginia is among the top five poorest states in the nation, those numbers would suggest that about ten thousand Morgantown residents are just a few weeks away from homelessness. In addition, the ongoing heat wave that has already severely affected the local homeless population is not an isolated event. We are hopefully all aware of climate change and the immense threat it poses to the entire planet that cannot be prevented or fixed by any one community, but the very least we can do is adapt. I believe a form of consistently accessible water access beyond a dog park is a very good place to start. My generation has spent our entire teenage and adult lives witnessing the homelessness crisis worsen, and many of us have been personally impacted. I have a sister who is ten years old and will likely have to grapple with these same problems that I'm now discussing. It is and always has been our duty to be cognizant of the example that we're setting for the future leaders of this community, and one way that we can demonstrate that is by displaying a sense of community and compassion to those around us in need, rather than simply choosing to look away. For these reasons, I ask many of you to reconsider your positions on public encampment bans and take more time to interact with the homeless community on a truly humane level. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Riggs. I live at 134 Sherman Avenue, now this is my son. I am petrified of public speaking, so bear with me. My family and I went to the beach in June for a week-long vacation. As we were passing through Spruce Street on the way home, I noticed homeless people laying on the sidewalks, and it seemed to me like the homeless population had doubled and are a week away. And then the heat wave started. I got alerts on my phone about how dangerous it was. My mind went to those weary faces that I had passed on High Street and Spruce Street, people holding signs on the corner with absolutely nowhere to go to get out of the heat. Would they be okay? In the midst of a brutally dangerous heat wave, my family and I decided to hand out frozen spray bottles to help the homeless community. They could hold the icy cold bottles to their chests for a few hours to stay cool. My twenty-one-year-old son, Miles, and I held a frozen water bottle to the chest of the man who was so overheated, we weren't even sure at first if he was still alive. We sat and we sweated together with people in the hot, dangerous heat for as long as we could stand it. And then, we were privileged enough to get in our car with air conditioning and head back home to hole up in the AC in our beautiful historic home in South Park. We started learning people's names and their stories. In turn, they asked me how I was doing and how my kids were doing. I have learned a lot in a very short amount of time. One thing that sticks with me every single day is that one of the only consistently available sources of water for these people that I have grown to call my friends is at the dog park. We have failed them so badly that they are literally drinking dog water. But what haunts me the most is the mother on the streets who carried with her one of her most prized possessions, the hospital ID tag of her baby, where her baby was born, and she lost that because the police raided her tent and threw away everything she owned that can never be replaced. That mother's voice and her pain deserve to be heard. We don't know the pain and trauma behind what led to someone ending up on the streets, but if you take the time to listen, you'll hear some of the most incredible stories, like David's, who escaped Cuba on a crammed fishing boat when he was twenty-one years old. What I've also learned in my short time meeting people on the streets is that they love very deeply, a homeless man struggling with the heat, learned that while we were giving out water and popsicles, and he insisted that I take five dollars so that we could continue to help the homeless community. These people with almost nothing are some of the most selfless people I've met. There are bad apples in every bunch, but if you treat everyone like a bad apple, the problem of homelessness will not just go away. Criminalizing people for sleeping on the streets when they've been left with nowhere to go only perpetuates the cycle of desperation and hopelessness that drives addiction and homelessness. As you tuck yourself into your comfortable beds tonight, in your air-conditioned bedrooms, I hope that you, like me, are haunted by the voices of our most vulnerable member of our community who are laying down their heads to rest on the cement. Thank you.
Hi, council members. I'm Jason Glassman, I'm at 134 Sherman Avenue as well. Just a little context, and I'm just sort of echoing what everybody's been saying about the homeless. I myself was a resident in the Bartlett House in two thousand and seven. I had addiction and alcoholism problems, and I've been sober for over six years now. But since then, I didn't, I spent two weeks down in the cots, down in there. I was, I had nowhere to go, no one to turn to. I was lost. And having that resource there really helped me, because, first off, I had to have somewhere to lay down, you know? The misery that those people experience out there, it's almost hard. They don't really have a choice in the matter of if they're going to use, or drink, or steal, because there is no options for them. And if we don't present those options to them, it's kind of, it's kind of a moot point to try to kick them out of there, to go into prison, to come right back, to do the same thing, you know? How about the police officer, "Who are you, where are you from, where can we take you to, where do you need to go?" We don't have those places. There's places they can go for periods of the day at certain times. But I just wanted to be a testament for a person who didn't have anything, no money, no car, no relationship, no house, was homeless, was ready to eat out of the dumpster. Now, I have accounts, I have a car, I have a family, I have, you know, everything in life that I would want, and peace of mind. And I've been out there meeting these people too. And just a little compassion from everybody goes a long way. Just a little bit, you know? Thanks.
Hello, I'm Pastor Shirley Robinson. And I was sitting here, listening to all the conversations that have gone on, and my heart was touched. And this scripture came to mind that I would like to read. It's in Second Chronicles, and it says, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and will forgive their sin, and will heal their land." This city, this nation, needs a healing from God. We need to come together and reason together, because we all need a healing. And if we don't turn to God, some people believe in God, some people don't. But in order for us, this city, to be healed, we're gonna have to come together. We're gonna have to reason with one another. We know that the homeless, we're gonna, they're gonna have, we're gonna have that probably always. But we can come together and make provisions for the less fortunate. We're gonna have to respect one another and come together. We can't talk down to people, we can't try to belittle them, say all different kinds of profanity, but we're gonna have to come together if we're gonna make this work. It takes everybody to come together so that we can bring a healing to the city, and the lives of the homeless can be changed. I had mentioned before that some people are homeless by choice, and others are homeless because of life circumstances. But we have all the resources we need within this room, but we're gonna have to come together in order for it to work. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Savannah Lusk. I'm from Hawthorne Avenue in Morgantown. I wasn't gonna talk today, but all of these comments, I think maybe convince me to speak. I'm a doctor in town. I work at a big clinic, and then sometimes I volunteer my time at Health Right. And you know what I did today? I treated a man who has open wounds, but he has nowhere to go, so flies keep getting in them. And he doesn't have any running water, no public bathrooms, no one will let him in to clean out his wounds. So, we fixed him up, and he's coming back tomorrow, and I'm gonna keep fixing him up until hopefully it's healed. Until, and we gave him some free antibiotics, okay? I think what troubles me is that we talked about hospitality, and I think a lot of people pointed out that, where are the resources? Where are the public bathrooms? Where are the sharps containers? Everyone are talking about needles. If you are houseless, and you either use needles for whatever reason, or you're diabetic, then where are you gonna keep those? I mean, where are you gonna put them? People drop things out of their bags all the time. We don't have water stations. I walk around, even when I'm downtown, I'm parched, I didn't bring my water bottle, I'm just screwed. We don't have the infrastructure. I'm personally not seeing the hospitality that everybody's talking about. I think another thing that troubles me, I guess maybe being a physician, is this rhetoric that these people aren't from here. Okay, let's say they aren't. Guess what? They're human beings, they're people. They're people, they're here, they're on our streets. And if you all are more upset about trash on the ground, and you're not upset about human beings, people with hearts and souls, people's daughters, people's brothers, people's sisters.
Savannah, I ask you to address council.
Sorry, sitting and laid on the ground, but we're upset about cardboard on the ground? I just don't understand that line of thinking. The humanity and the rhetoric, and I know, I know that Louise was just trying to start a conversation, but, I mean, even the argument that there are crimes being committed, I know someone said that. The other day, at the last meeting, the police chief said that we have seen stability in the crime rates, correct? That was said. There are no increase in crime rates. It's ugly, we don't want to see it. We don't want to see these people sitting on our street. People can say what they want, but we can come together and make a solution. Solutions. We can work together, but banning camping isn't an option. Everyone else said it. You're gonna criminalize these people, they're gonna get fines, they're gonna be back on the street, and the jobs you want them to get, the housing that you want them to get, it's never gonna happen, because you're just gonna dig them deeper into a hole, instead of reaching down and giving them a hand. That's the first thing, when I took the Hippocratic Oath as a doctor, of do no harm to someone. And camping bans, things like that, all it does is dig people deeper. I really appreciate everyone at least turning their wills to try to come up with a solution, and I know it's not easy, and we come from different walks of life, but I wish you all could be in a clinic and see what I see. Thank you all.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
My name is Anna Saab. I also live on Hawthorne Avenue in Evansdale. I'm a member of the Morgantown Coalition for Housing Action. We're a group of different organizations, including Health Right, including Project Rainbow, other organizations, as well as local businesses, and we're just working together to try to bridge gaps in resources. Right now, our main focus is providing free coolers with free water and Gatorade, because it's hot, and when you don't have anywhere to go, and you don't have a way to keep cool, you need as much hydration as possible, right? So, that's something we're working on right now. And I just wanted to address sort of the potential proposal of an expansion on the camping ban. Discriminatory laws and policies such as camping bans only further stigmatize some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Sleeping, eating, drinking, sitting and lying down to rest are all legal actions when done in a private place, something houseless and poor folks often don't have access to. Criminalizing these behaviors won't solve the homelessness crisis, and although certain organizations might be lobbying for a camping ban expansion in the name of less needles and trash on the street, enacting these policies won't necessarily accomplish that either. These policies are not only inhumane and ineffectual, but they're also a burden on government bank accounts and a waste of taxpayer dollars. According to the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, it can cost three times more to enforce anti-homeless laws than to house folks without housing. Housing-first strategies are not only more cost-effective, but they're also more successful, because the only thing that will make a person no longer homeless is to provide them with a home. Additionally, it's worth mentioning the obvious, which is that if so many members of our community are homeless, that multiple organizations in Morgantown are finding it imperative to advocate against their public presence. Our very understaffed police department will quickly become overwhelmed with intakes. And this will be on a regular basis, since going to jail for being homeless, then being released, isn't going to change that that individual is still without a home, now likely has hundreds of dollars more debt, and will have an additional barrier to becoming employed and attaining other resources. The National Low Income Housing Coalition has collected data on affordable rental housing per extremely low-income renter in every US state. In West Virginia, there are only fifty-three affordable rental units for every one hundred extremely low-income renter household. The data speaks for itself. There is a major affordable housing shortage in our state, something I know that everybody in this room understands. No one's expecting you to solve things at a state level, but we, as local constituents, expect you to develop local policies and take actions for our community based on the science developed from data of the many reliable coalitions and agencies in our state and country. Criminalizing homelessness by extending the reach of a camping ban is not going to solve anything. It's not only a short-sighted policy, but a wasteful policy. You were elected for a variety of reasons, one of which is that voters felt confident in your ability to creatively problem-solve, in a way that helps every member of the community, not just the property owners and rich folks who supported your campaigns, or might have the loudest voices. Please show us, we can still have confidence in your humanity and in your leadership. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, it's all.
Hello, my name is Daniel Lightner, and I stay at twenty-four oh two Brunswick Court in Morgantown. Super nervous being up here. I've been watching these meetings like every week for months. I work, I've been working with the homeless for over, over a year now, and before that I was homeless for about five years. I did hard drugs, all that. I bought a tent one time with my girlfriend, and we were, I bought a Thousand Trails pass for a year, and we were gonna stay all over the country for free. And that was my mentality when I got a tent. I hear a lot of talk about tents, and what drove me out to Morgantown was, my mom moved out here, she said, "It's cheap, come out here, you might get an apartment." So, first thing I did was, I stayed at the Bartlett House with my girlfriend and dog, and it's the first time we ever stayed in a shelter in PA. You couldn't go to a shelter where it's male and female, and you can bring your dog, or, you know, it was very difficult to be homeless out in PA. You know, there was no tents or camps or anything like that, it drives you out to go get better. And there's, there is a place in PA, Kensington, where you can for sure go, sleep on the street there, and they won't do anything. And it's starting to look pretty similar to Kensington at certain spots in downtown. Needles, homeless camps, nothing changing. I had a friend from California come out here, because I thought I could help him get housed. He did good for the first month, and then he met the people out here that stay on the street. It's, it's, it's hard, so, you know, it, it could be good for everybody, but it's also a great place to be homeless out here, with the benefits. I mean, if you want to add water fountains, bathrooms, and shit, you're, you're, there's no need to go to a shelter then, because everything you need will be on the street downtown, you know? I mean, you need an increase of beds at the shelter, we also need organizations to link together. We, we pretty much serve ten percent of the homeless population, the other ninety percent's on the street, addicts, mentally ill, the ten percent who are, come to shelters, who are financially struggling or whatever, boom, you can get an apartment in four or five months, once you get a job and all that, but if you're an addict and you come to the shelter, and you're struggling, and we don't have somewhere to send you to, or if you have mental problems and you have schizophrenia, we, you know, we could work on avenues where we link together and, you know, could provide certain resources for the people that come there that we can't serve. Not that rules and regulations stop them from being there, but, I mean, it does make it more difficult if we can't get HUD papers for them, or they don't want to share financial information, or don't have any, or this or that. If we could drift that into a different direction where they can get help, then that could help. Not camps, you know, you can't, like somebody said earlier, you need an address for certain things, you know, when you're at a camp, you're, you're protecting, you know, those people for that time, but their life's on pause still. There's gonna be no progressing out of that camp. Yeah, they're surviving there, but, you know, are they, are they going to their job from that camp? I mean, I've never met anybody who's, you know, it just seemed But I mean, I've never met anybody who's, you know, it just seems like a protection thing for now, not a long-term, not even a short-term. Just, you know, protect them, protect those people who, you know. So I definitely support Wheezy and her proposal. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? The only other thing I have then is we received a letter from West Virginia University signed by President Gordon Gee in support of the letter. I'm just going to summarize. It supports the proposal of Counselor Wheezy, but it also acknowledges the willingness and desire to work together as a community in terms of moving forward and addressing these concerns. And then on that note, I'm going to close the public portion. We do not have any special committee reports this evening. And then we have the consent agenda in which we will acclamation. Our consent agenda consisting of a consideration of approval of the second reading on ordinance providing zoning for Phil State Annex and Six Four of the City of Morgantown. Upon final order from the Mon County Commission as B two service by amending thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit attached and declared to be part of this ordinance as it the same were fully set forth herein, as well as the consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code to use classification for smoke shop or tobacco shop, establish definitions related to the use and provide for permitted uses and supplemental conditions related to the use and related defined terms, as well as consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance vacating, abandoning and annuling twelve-foot wide unnamed alley running a distance of approximately one hundred sixty feet located between Calhoun Avenue, Madigan Avenue and the first ward of the City of Morgantown, Mon County, West Virginia, not used for useful or sidewalk stormwater management utility or any other purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
They all pass, six zero. Onto new business. A consideration of approval for the first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget of the City of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached here too and made part of this ordinance. The same applies to the general fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
And for discussion, I believe we have our newest finance director, Mr. John Ferguson, in attendance. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team, more importantly.
Thank you, good evening. My name's John Ferguson, C D K. I don't admit a.
A few of you so far. I'm very happy to be here tonight, very excited to be here. I'm originally from New York State, upstate New York, definitely not New York City. The area very similar to here, only a little more rural. So, very excited to be here in West Virginia. I've been here two years now. Since leaving public accounting, which I was in public accounting for nineteen years, I am a certified public accountant. I do have my master's in business administration concentration more than finance. I was working for Mon Health up until two weeks ago, so now I am working for the City of Morgantown. Super excited. We have a very strong team in the finance department, very happy over that. So far it's making my job easy. We did hit the ground running and we are working through everything that has to be done. So, I do have a brief summary of the budget revisions if you want me to go through that. If not, we are more than happy to move on. Totally up to you.
I would suggest that maybe a brief overview of.
If I could interrupt you for one second, if those in the audience could either maintain conversation, Mr. Julian. Thank you.
Okay.
With due respect to our.
Now, the budget, budget transfers or the budget amendments that you have in front of you. Now, these right here, these are all items that you have all discussed previously. And this is something that the former finance director Kevin has gone through, he's made the calculations. I'm simply bringing this, kind of presenting his work, if you want to say that, which he did outstanding work, by the way. So, what we do have here is a budget revision. The total is one point three million dollars. And what that comprises of is the carryover from last year's surplus. So, we're not talking about whether or not we are raising money for this. This is money that has been unspent that we would like to spend now. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Now, that's going to be allocated to certain areas. Number one, we have the insurance and workers' comp, so we're talking about a transfer of ninety-four forty-five thousand dollars. The budget alley, or the budget modification to increase the departments across the board because of anticipated increases in overall insurance and workers' comp based on three different things. And this is all due to prior conversations with the insurance agent. This is, again, shouldn't be any surprise to anybody, that the increase is a result of the exposure of the city's workers' comp experience modification rating, which basically means because of its history of having people draw off on workers' comp and also the national trends are continuing to go higher. There is a need to increase across the board the amount of budgeted, doesn't mean it's actually going to be spent, but the amount that is budgeted or anticipated for insurance purposes. Make sense? Okay. Number two, it's going to be the city manager contract services. We're looking at a fourteen point eight thousand dollar budget modification related to the prior year carryover for, and I'm going to quote this because I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the enterprise GIS, I do know the GIS, stack, plus the license for the operating system and aerial image for Mon County. You're all familiar with that, correct? Perfect. I'm an accountant, okay. I'm definitely not a. This, that, that's nothing. Next, we have the city clerks travel and training. This is a ten thousand dollar budget modification to increase travel and training costs as it relates to boards and commissions. So, anytime that, let's say, for example, one of you folks or any of the other commissions actually has to travel, we do have that in the budget now. Again, it's not that we are going to spend it, it's just going to be there in case we do need to. Make sense? Next, we have planning and zoning, so we have a twenty thousand dollar budget modification related to the prior year carryover. Again, it's money that wasn't spent in prior year, they would like to be able to spend this year for the continuous aside ordinance updates. Okay. Next, we have. Okay, next we have IT. IT has almost sixty-eight thousand dollar budget modification related to the prior year carryover. And they would like to allocate that to the Microsoft Office and Service Express, so to make sure that they can pay for that. Again, prior year carryover, money that was not spent last year, they would like to spend this year or at least the ability to. Next, we have the transfers to other funds. This is going to go into our capital escrow. So, we have a total of six hundred and five thousand dollars to be allocated as follows. We have one, two, three, four, we have five different places where our capital transfers are going to be earmarked for or allocated to. The very first one is fifty-five thousand allocated to the Mon River Trails Conservancy. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Close. That was recommended by council during a budget meeting for the drainage, maintenance, grant, match and bulletin cases. So, we do have that earmarked, that's fifty-five thousand. Next, we have twenty thousand allocated to the Botanic Gardens, requested by the mayor during the budget meetings. We have three hundred and five, or three hundred and fifty thousand allocated to the Bow Park Capital, requested by council member Danielle Trumbull, right? Okay? I'm getting familiar with names. During the budget meeting for pavilion replacements, we have a hundred and fifty thousand allocated to the city share of funding of the Catholic charities takeover at the Bartlett House. So, not even going to bring that up. I know that's, that's already been discussed. We are talking about now doing a budget transfer for the city's share of that. And then finally, we have thirty thousand allocated to warming shelters. So, total going to the capital escrow, six hundred and five thousand dollars. That's what that line item's for. Next, we have the library. They're looking for, or not looking for, we're looking to transfer almost sixty-eight thousand dollars for, it says here, part of the original request to cover security guard costs. So, we want to make sure that that is covered. Next, we have thirty-three thousand dollars for the transit authority for budget modifications regarding the resolution of proven cost to root the Hazel House of Hope. You all are familiar with that, correct? Excellent. Next, we have the balance, which is going into the contingency line item. So, we have three hundred and sixty-one thousand for a budget modification allocated to contingency. That will bring that budget line item slightly below a million dollars. Remember, the purpose of the contingency is for exactly those purposes that you don't know are coming up. So, for example, let's say you need fifty thousand dollars for, I'm not even going to try to guess. You just need it, okay? It wasn't planned for, it wasn't budgeted, but yet you did budget for something that happens. You know it's going to happen, you know that that stuff is going to come up. That's what contingency's for, okay? So, we are bringing that line item up. It is going to still be under, slightly under a million dollars, but that will give the council the ability to move money if needed for those times when things do come up, when you do need the budget, you do need the funds there. That's what that's for. We have thirty-seven thousand allocated to police. And what that is, is that that is to allocate prior year carryover for open purchase orders that had not yet been received at the end of the last fiscal year. Remember, the last fiscal year, that's June thirtieth, so we were talking about just a couple of weeks ago. So, they did have open purchase orders. That wasn't in the original budget. Now that we know what that number is, what was received, we are making that budget amendment for that. Fire, same thing, forty-four thousand budget modification for prior year carryovers for open purchase orders. And then we have the garage, one thousand two hundred dollar budget modification related to the tool allowance for employees that was missed on the budget. So, that pretty much sums it up. I mean, I don't, I don't want to get into extreme detail. Again, these are, I'm assuming this has all been discussed with you folks previously. Shouldn't be anything new. Do you have any questions for me that I could answer? Number two.
You did it.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I really do appreciate the opportunity. And finance is here for you folks, so if you need anything, if we can help you, we're right down there. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's first. Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. Passed a six-year. Next, we have our city managers.
Thank you, mayor. There are a couple of items that I wanted to bring to council's attention. Annually, what, what happens is there's a, a design update for, for our website. That is in, in progress and it should be finalized by early fall. Any suggestions, I know some of you have had some recommendations about the website. Please contact Holly at the communication department should you have any concerns regarding or any suggestions on how to improve our website design. So, we're right in the middle of that process. Would appreciate any, any information that you, you might have. Also wanted to, tonight council voted on the, the rental of a hangar space and another space at the, at the airport. It has been and continues to be the goal of, of the city to help the, the airport become self-sustaining. It is an enterprise fund and what that means is that it stands on its own. It's got to generate enough revenues to be able to pay for its own operations. That has not happened, I don't know how, how many years it's been. But there's some, some things that are in the works that will, that we hope will help balance that in going, going years down the road. One is to try to increase our employments to ten thousand. If, if employments can increase to ten thousand within a, a calendar year, we automatically get a million dollars of federal funding, capital funding, which then frees up other dollars to help supplement operations that, until they can fully stand on their own. The rental of the, the hangar, the construction of another hangar and potential construction of a third hangar are all part of that whole process of trying to help the airport sustain itself and stand on its own two feet. And certainly they want to as badly as we want them to. And we, we have some hopes that going down the road, that's going to happen. We are, we have secured the services of consultant out of, who specializes with, in FAA kinds of issues at the federal level out of DC. And we're planning a trip to meet with our congressional staff, with our consultants to try to help, number one, encourage new funding, but also try to secure the funding that we currently have. If we, if we receive all the funding that we currently have, we, we would have forty million dollars to be able to help with the runway extension, which would get us just about finished. And that would be, that would be a, a, a great thing. The other thing related to the airport, essential air services. We, we fall under the essential air service contract that's controlled by the FAA. They submitted bids, a bid request from airlines that would like to provide services out of, out of the Morgantown Airport. We received five respondents and all, all really good, good airlines. Southern is one of those. We're, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be interviewing these, these entities to see which one will give us not only a good fit for, for our usership here locally, would encourage other entities to utilize the airport more effectively. And number three, that would help stabilize the employment issue that we're talking about. That's, that's coming up. The, just wanted to announce that thus far, year-to-date, Vincent has reminded me that we, we've had twenty thousand visitors so far from our summer concert series. That's a, that's a good, that's a good number. Also, you're all aware of the project to, to place cameras, surveillance cameras in the downtown area. Thirty-three of those cameras are now up and functioning. We've had problems with, with securing the, the electric, the electrical power to, to, to operate some of those. But thirty-three have been, are up and operating and so we have six left to go up. The paving contract, you're all aware of the paving contract, what's been going on. There's a lot of paving that has happened in, throughout the city this summer. It is really close to wrapping up. We're anticipating within the next week or two, the paving contract. There will be some loose ends, I'm sure, but the major paving part of the contract is, will be completed in August. Finally, after some search, we, certainly the administration squared around when we received the resignation of, of key staff in the finance department and the communication director, director of communications of the city. Just wanted to let you know that you've met our finance director and he's hit the ground running. Has things really doing well and I'm really pleased with where that's going. And we are very close on securing a, an employment contract for a director of communications. I'm hoping to be able to announce that to you within the next week or so. That's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. The Police Civil Service Commission will be meeting in two days and hopefully they will be certifying some. will be certifying some names of candidates for entry-level police officer. Once names are certified, then the commission will reach out and ask for permission to hire and to interview some folks, and we'll get some new police officers hopefully in very soon. They also will be setting the date for the October entry-level exam and the March and June twenty-twenty-five entry-level exams. So we will, once the commission meets and sets those dates, we will make sure that we have those published on our website and on the MPD website. So I want to share that, a little bit of good news. And then also wanted to remind folks that we will only have one August regular meeting, because many of you will, and administration will be going to the West Virginia Municipal League Conference in Huntington on the first week of August, so the next regular meeting will not be until August twentieth. We'll have our July thirtieth meeting the whole, but the only regular meeting we have in August will be August twentieth, so I just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, mayor. At its last June meeting, the city council adopted an ordinance annexing property in Brookhaven of BFS to consolidate their existing property for a future development. The county commission has now entered the order, making that annexation effective as of July first, and council adopted the zoning ordinance for that property tonight, so all the, all the legislative work on that is done, and I'm sure Development Services is in contact with the property owner on the forthcoming development. We also adopted tonight the ordinance confirming the, really the prior annulment of an alley in First Ward, which will facilitate the redevelopment of that property for another church use, so that will also be recorded and property owner notify. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. From the council members. Councilwoman, would you be so proud of me?
Interesting meeting tonight, and seeing we've lost the majority of the crowd. There are some things, though, that were remarkable. I listened at the end to the report on our financing and realized just exactly how much we're expending on this city and this group of people that, that we heard so much about tonight. We are a caring council, we have been for the longest time. We were responsible for the initiation and the actual birth of, I guess, the Hazel House of Hope. We were there to annex it in so that the various organizations could function more effectively. You know, we've done things like provide transportation to that location, we've helped Health Right in their new facility. You heard tonight some of the consequence of some of the activities, you know, that now we're spending seventy thousand dollars a year for security at the library, is something that, that in my lifetime is new here in Morgantown. I'm getting letters now from our Main Street concerned about what's happening downtown. I'm getting emails, and I'm sure all of council has too, from the various people who are disturbed at what they see along the rail trail. I'm hearing complaints from parents that their students are being solicited at school and panhandled. I'm hearing from various landlords that their houses are being broken into. I'm hearing from West Virginia University, and I think you probably didn't go into that as deep as the letter really expressed, the difficulty they're having with an arrest over, six arrests for, and four outstanding warrants were issued by university police on or near campus in the past week. All of those very disturbing, all of those to a group of people who have been very sympathetic and empathetic to the circumstance and had tried to do these things. I'm not sure I have an answer, I'm just really expressing my frustration. I'm part of the person, I'm part of the group here who will attempt to come to some sort of solution. We do know there needs to be some sort of activity that we can address these various problems with, and we have, and we will, and we will continue, you can be reliant on that. But you can't expect that we'll satisfy everybody. We just do the best we can, as you should, as we've done in the past, we'll continue. We want to make Morgantown a very livable community, but we don't want to impact the ability of that community to be sympathetic to the circumstances that we're exposed to. Thanks for letting me there.
Great, Bill.
I hadn't really planned on saying too much tonight since we were just in the beginning stages. As I've stated before, I realize this is a complex issue, and I'm trying to look at it from both sides, but from the beginning of getting on council, my main focus has been the safety and well-being of the city, and the things I've seen over the past year have concerned me, and I just want to stay focused on the well-being and trying to work through this and make this city safe, and I want people to feel like they could come downtown and feel safe and stuff. But anyway, I also want to look at the solutions helping those of our most vulnerable community, but, and do this all together and work out solutions to figure what to do. But we would be joining Wheeling, Parkersburg, our sister cities, Westover, Granville, and Star City, that have all passed bans on encampments, which are all different, every city's different, some have different solutions, so, but I just want to do what's best for the entire community, and I, and I realize I've opened a big, big subject here, so we will, we will get through this in a couple more weeks, and as, as we further down the road, we'll be discussing a little bit more in depth. So, sorry, I'm not a best speaker, so I apologize.
I really appreciate the two previous speakers, I think we have a complicated issue on our hands, I think we have, I've been writing down notes, but sort of the role of cities is to provide, one way or another, for economic growth, for livability, for the ability to be thoughtful and caring for the people in the community that have needs that might exceed what we can provide, or maybe we can meet those needs. We want a city that's safe, clean, has some artistic qualities, has parks, well-paid, we're talking about paving, the ability to apply for state and federal grants, which might meet some of the needs of people that we can't, that we cannot manage, have the ability to plan, which I think is brought out by a lot of the comments this evening, provide housing on every income level. We were talking tonight about the fact that we live in a city that has a certain amount of housing that's vacant right now, but also we, our need housing for people at different income levels than perhaps some of the housing that's available could provide. Seems like some points, we need some, some triage to see which citizens could be helped which way. Some of the most needy in our community that don't happen to have drug and alcohol issues might be able to be, have their needs met, churches and other organizations that might be easier to manage than this, these issues of people who need help with their addiction and need help with mental illness. I think we have a huge issue with housing, where we have this idea of housing first, which we have believed in, I don't know, as long as I've been on council, we've been talking about housing first, and then the fact that some people, when you approach them, at least the first several times, will say that they don't want housing because they're not comfortable inside. It makes a difficult situation because we, as a city, have a hard time supporting people kind of residing all over the place, and then we have people who do want housing, and then we have trouble finding with vouchers or other means having enough housing. These are huge issues, we're obviously not solving them this evening, and for people who don't think that we've been working on them, we have. We appoint people to different groups that are working on housing issues, we are working on housing issues ourselves, and we're also working on safety issues and cleanliness issues. And so there's this, there's this whole system that needs attending to, and it, and it cannot just be being thoughtful and kind, there has to be the clean and safe component, so whatever any of you can do to help, whatever any of you can do to work with us, rather than just getting angry with us, we are trying, and we do want to have the best city that Morgantown can be. Thank you.
Councilor Trumbull?
I will not have a report this evening, I would just thank Clerk Wade and administration and the IT staff for making the medical accommodation for me this evening, and remind everyone that the Woodburn Association of Neighbors will be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, at seven PM at the Woodburn Community Complex.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. Lots happened, I was away on vacation, and I'd like to thank Councilor Michael for bringing this to the forefront. It's, it's an important issue, and safety and well-being of our constituents is really front and foremost, and I think this is an important issue. I really appreciate everybody that has spoken this evening, and I can't say I disagree with anyone. I, I agree with everyone. That said, I think sometimes we focus so intently on a small population, we, we serve thirty thousand people, and we need to make thirty thousand people feel welcome downtown while caring for our most vulnerable, and I would suggest that we, our heart's in the right place, I think everybody's is in terms of what we've been doing, but I would question if what we're doing has been the most helpful, because my eyes and what I experience and what I hear from constituents is a worsening of our downtown in terms of people wanting to be there, feeling unsafe, and so I, I really welcome the opportunity to relook at what we're doing and what we can do differently to make it a more safe and welcoming place while being respectful for those in need that want services, that we can help, those that don't, we can't help. And I have a lot of rail trail updates, but I don't have enough detail to give them to you, so I will have to provide that next time, but that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
I guess that's my report. I really want to, first off, I would like to say thank you to everybody for all the kind words, for allowing me this opportunity to sit in this chair. I will do my absolute best to make the city proud as best I can. I really appreciated the opportunity to speak with former mayor, the former mayor, former mayor, to get insight, for those that don't know at home, former mayor Justice is in the audience, and the others that have been having the opportunity to just kind of learn from what you've learned in your experiences. I also wanted to point out my excitement for Thursday on a lighter note, I know that tonight was, at times, you know, difficult conversations to be had, so on a more lighter note, I am looking forward to Thursday's Jazz on the Green at Jack Roberts Park. Not rails and trails, but green space and the arts, as we discussed earlier. It's one of my favorite events they put on every year. And I will also echo the sentiments of everybody here, that everyone has been working and having conversations in regards to the issues that we are all seeing, not just our city or our county, or even our neighboring municipalities or universities, but across the country. More than a homeless problem, we have an addiction problem, and as soon as we can recognize that and find ways around that, I think it'll help everybody. So with that said, I will entertain a motion.
And make a motion.
Your turn.
There's one. Second, all right. That will be nine oh three. Your turn.